It's 6:00 PM, Monday, March 31st. So I'm going to first call to order a special meeting of the Liquor Control Board. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, Jenny.
So there is an update to one establishment for a sidewalk application. There was an amended application that was approved by staff.
So we have Papa Frank Specks Mandarin Sneakers Tiny Tie Standing Stone. These are all renewals, all recommended for approval at this point?
Yes, yes.
Any questions from council? Any questions from members of the public? Okay, hearing no concerns, I would entertain a motion to approve all six items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the end of the Liquor Control Board agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Bryn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That meeting is adjourned. It's 6:01 PM. I'll call to order the Winuski City Council meeting. First up is agenda review. Any concerns about our order this evening?
No.
Okay. Next up is public comment. I think everyone here is attending for an agenda item. We do have someone on Zoom. If you are here for public comment, to make comment about something not on this evening's agenda, please feel free to use the raise hand or chat features. Okay. Seeing no comment, I'll move to the consent agenda. We have our City Council and Liquor Control Board minutes from March 17th and Accounts Payable warrant March 27. And Accounts Payable warrant... Oh, yeah, I just said that. Okay. Any concerns about the consent agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Aurora, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda approved. We are on to council reports. Can I start with you, Aurora?
Sure. I don't have anything new to report.
Great. Bryn?
Same. I don't have anything new to report.
Nor do I. Thomas?
I do. So, healthy, connected people met on the 18th. We spoke about a few different things, some updates from Ray, which was really, really good for the group to hear. The Thrive Director has started their new job and they've started remotely, which is very exciting for everybody involved, as Ray and his staff were balancing a lot of things while the Thrive, while we were trying to fill that position. So they've started remotely. That said, they have already started on summer planning, so things are going really well. Elaine, I don't know if you want to add anything there, but...
Yeah, they won't be full-time till May, so Ray is still underwater. Plus, there's another full-time staff down, so...
That said, summer program registration is available on the website. That includes pool passes, so you can get your pool passes and register for any of the other summer programs that the city offers right now on the city's website. Ray also let the group know that the environmental findings that happened over on the library side of O'Brien, as a result of that, there's more work that will have to be done to mitigate those environmental issues. So that will push back the sale a little bit, I think he said, until July. And then the commission just spent a lot of their time planning out what their next three meetings are going to look like and who they're going to be hosting, so looking at having Winuski Partnership for Prevention come in and deliver their report, the Library Committee coming in, and then also talking about the West Allen Park design. And the next meeting will be April 8th.
All right, thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, I've just got a quick update. The Winuski Housing Commission and Planning Commission met last week to continue discussing inclusionary zoning. Our commissions continue to work to try to find ways to incentivize developers to build multi-bedroom housing, three-bedrooms and up specifically. We have another combined meeting coming up on April 22nd from 6:30 to 8:30. During that meeting, Sarah Muskin from CCRPC will be asking for feedback on the regional future land use map and will go over housing targets for the city.
All right, thank you. On to city reports. Elaine?
Yes, today is the International Transgender Day of Visibility. Community members are encouraged to visit our website or various outreach channels to view the inspirational resolution unanimously passed by Winuski City Council earlier this month. Construction teams are back on site for the Main Street reconstruction project and work is resuming. If you haven't yet, please sign up for the weekly construction updates at winuskiVT.gov/MainStreet. The update that went out on March 28th includes all of the important details about construction activities, parking restrictions, detours, and more. A new multilingual update with important project information is also available in 15 languages. Reminder that all dogs owned in the city of Winuski must be registered with the city clerk on or before April 1st, that's tomorrow. That's of each year per state and city laws. To get started, stop by the city clerk's office at Winuski City Hall on 27 West Allen Street. Opening hours are Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And finally, Winuski Recreation and Parks are currently looking for coach and assistant coach volunteers to support the 2025 Vermont Patriots soccer season. If you know someone who's interested, please visit winuskiVT.gov/volunteer.
All right, thank you. We are on to our regular items. We have just item A on for discussion approval, the Downtown Winuski Funding Requests and Sustainability Plan. Did you want to introduce, Elaine?
I would, yes. All you are welcome to come up and bring up more chairs as needed.
Yes, yes, indeed.
So, early this year, Downtown Winuski Executive Director Melissa Corbin indicated during... indicated to me that the organization was expecting a deficit in the tens of thousands in 2025. She had been making every effort to find ways to fill the gap, had finally concluded it was not possible, and was therefore unsure about the organization's ability to continue paying staff and continue operating. I have seen Downtown Winuski providing much value to the community. It's hard to quantify the sense of vibrancy and place they provide via their events. The boost of businesses can be quantified during the business period, or during the event period, and Downtown Winuski did so in the packet materials. However, my guess is that that sense of vibrancy pays dividends beyond the timeframe of the events. Less visibly, but also important, Downtown Winuski also provides value by providing advice to businesses, serving as relationship liaison between members of the business community and city staff and functions, and acting as a sort of chamber of commerce, a place where each business community can consider supporting and reflecting their interests. Downtown Winuski is the city's primary direct investment in economic vitality of the four goal areas in our master plan. Under Melissa's leadership, I've seen a leveling up in professional strategic management, and it would be a mistake to lose this momentum. Therefore, I encourage Downtown Winuski to consider discussing the possibility of more funding from the city with city council. Neither Melissa nor the board of Downtown Winuski had considered or had discussed that possibility before I recommended it, as they assumed the city would not have an appetite for such a request. I appreciate that council was willing to have this discussion at an extra meeting, no less, and that you provided your questions in advance so that Downtown Winuski could prepare the best they could to address your concerns before presenting in public. The information they provided for the packet was in response to those questions. And a reminder that although this is worn for discussion and approval, in case you are ready tonight, I do recommend that if you have more questions you'd like to answer, that you not rush to a decision tonight.
Yeah, we'll meet again on the 7th. Thank you for coming in and for taking the time to put all this together. I know we've all had a couple of days to look through it, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to do like an introduction, any sort of overview you want, and then we can ask specific questions or for any more detail that we're looking for.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so I'm Laura Wade, Chair of Downtown Winuski.
George Bergen, I'm the treasurer.
You guys all know. Thank you so much for having us on your agenda tonight. I know it's a special night that you had to come in, so we really appreciate you doing that. So two years ago, Downtown Winuski made a critical investment in our future, and we hired Melissa Corbin. We knew that to sustain and grow the services that we provide, we needed someone with the expertise to evaluate our financial health and lead us forward. In her first year, Melissa uncovered a major issue. Our organization had failed to pay payroll taxes, and which eventually resulted in the loss of our nonprofit status. Instead of letting this setback define us, we took action. We developed a plan. We corrected our standing with the IRS and put safeguards in place to ensure our long-term stability, all while continuing to move our mission and strategic plan forward. And I'm happy to say that we have restored our nonprofit status, which is very exciting. However, through this process, one thing has become very clear. Our current financial plan is not sustainable. While we have operated on a month-to-month cash flow relying on sponsorships and short-term funding, this model does not provide the stability needed to maintain our momentum. Without a long-term investment, we risk losing the critical progress we've made and the services our businesses and community depend on. So tonight, we wanted to share where we stand, the value we bring to Winuski, and why investing in Downtown Winuski is an investment in the future of our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Yeah.
I think as Elaine elaborated too in her cover sheet, we definitely see value and have also seen sort of growth improvement, like a good trajectory happening with the organization. I... I have some like pretty specific questions, actually. If anyone wants... I would first invite if anyone wants sort of general information or if there's any of the information that was included in the packet that you need more clarity on, would open up to that?
I would say that for the public, if there's anything you want to summarize, I know there's a lot here to distill, and it's, you know, for my level of detail preference, like this is awesome, I love this. But if there's anything that, like in summary, and you did provide, I think this past fall, like a single-page summary, so if there is anything that you wanted to note, because this could have taxpayer implications, so just want to give you the opportunity for that.
Do you want to give a summary, or George?
I know, I was more prepared to answer questions than give a summary.
Yeah, I think it was an interesting exercise for us, actually, to go ahead and put this package together for y'all because it kind of laid out the scope of the work that both Melissa and Sarah, our other employee, do kind of every day. And it, like seeing it all on paper was pretty amazing, and I'm, you know, incredibly proud of it. But I think, you know, it's, I think Downtown Winuski does more than just put on free events for the public. There's a lot of support for businesses, new and longtime-standing. A lot of support that we do with carrying the message from the city to the people who follow us on social media and also all the businesses that we're connected with. I know that the work that Melissa does with Elaine is really important, and the amount of, just the amount of effort that we've put for to kind of get our reporting up to par and the reporting we do for downtown designation status is really critical to what we're doing. Melissa is, has been able to get us, the grant when we were nonprofit status was sound. We were able to get the Better Places Grant, which was amazing, and added more assets into the city, and also kind of engaged the community, which I thought was really exciting. And we were able to actually, I can't remember the, how much we were able to raise
Just over $15,000.
From our community. And that added more like placemaking things, but also really sort of solidified, you know, what this organization is all about. So that's just a little circus of what Downtown Winuski does. And it's not just for Downtown Winuski, it's not just for the circle, it's for all of Winuski. Our name is a little misleading, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I'd like to note, sorry, you all put a tremendous amount of work into this. And you were, you know, I think it's fine to share. Laura had reached out to me, which was very concerned about, you know, how council would feel about this, and we talked about it at length and before they, you know, they had spoken with Elaine first. And the work that they put into these documents is really to try to show us and the taxpayer, you know, why Downtown Winuski is so important to our community. And, you know, when I think of Downtown Winuski, I think it's probably an organization, as many of these organizations are created that are supposed to benefit the businesses that are part of the downtown. But I feel like it's much more an organization that benefits the community as a whole. If we look at the events that Downtown Winuski puts on, they're varied, they're targeted to different groups, and it's not necessarily always something that maybe necessarily benefits their businesses. You know, I think of some of the bars for Halloween in Winuski, the kids can't drink, so they're not going in, but those business members and their staff are still carving out pumpkins and making sure that the events happen. So it's really a community organization in my mind, and less so a business organization. But then on top of that, you also have to do all of the business work, and you have to look, do the grant work, and you were, Melissa was helping extensively with everything that was happening on Main Street. So you do an awful lot. And I know that I and many people are thankful for everything that you do and the events that you put on. I know that you don't like to come and ask, but make an ask like this, so I appreciate you all showing up.
I want to ask a few questions about the budget information. I'm not sure I fully follow. Are the events budgeted separately and self-funding? Is that what I'm seeing? Do they bring any additional revenue back to your overhead costs?
So, the former. So we raise funds through sponsorship and community donations in order for the events to be put on. So the ask that we're making is for our baseline operating costs, not for the events themselves.
Okay.
That gets done by fundraising that I, that we do.
Okay. And then... In the business sponsorships? In the 20, in the budget that was attached, I only saw four Winuski businesses sponsoring. Maybe I'm misreading that, right? I wanted to get a sense of how much, how much money, how many businesses are choosing to sponsor and how much you're bringing in from that.
So there was a document linked, and I'm not sure exactly what the, what page it was on, but it was what, same document that I presented to you in January when I did my report, which showed all of the businesses that provide sponsorship. So it would be under the Sustainability Plan and Alternative Funding Options. The second bullet, Generous Local Sponsors. That'll give you a list of, I believe it's 22 businesses. Don't quote me on that exact number, but that'll give you the visual.
And those, so is all that money simply going to the events?
It's not that simple. There are a handful that contribute to the general fund and the majority that go to the events. So, for example, Redstone does both. They give $5,000 to our general fund, which supports our operating costs, but they also give $1,500 to Halloween in Winuski, just as an example. Most of them go towards events because they have the forward-facing marketing benefit from that. But there's a few that are, that would like to stay behind the scenes and just support the general fund.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So you'll see in the budget, there's $7,500, and that's where that money is coming from. It's the people that are kind of behind the scenes that are giving the community donations. I try to differentiate sponsorship from community donations. So in the general fund, community donation line item of $7,500, you'll see that that's where the people that don't necessarily want or need the marketing face forward. And then underneath the events section of the budget, where I call sponsorship out, those are the people that are, or the entities that are getting the marketing benefit from it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Of course.
Sure. This might be a little bit more at the city or from the city's perspective. One of the questions that came to mind today, so sorry I didn't send it beforehand, was just kind of the impact you're seeing Downtown Winuski give to our BIPOC and New American businesses? Because I was just thinking, like, we've brought on some, the folks running the Community Challenge Grant to help with those businesses. And just like, I don't know, making sure that we're... I don't know, that we're giving funds for work that's happening? And not like, I don't know, that it's, that Downtown Winuski is serving everyone? And not like some businesses are left out and the city is giving money, or grants are giving money to cover that gap?
So, Melissa can speak more to this. My feeling is that with one and not quite a half a person, there's, with, you know, I would say a considerable skill set in that one and a half people, you cannot do everything.
No.
And also, so that's why the Working Communities Challenge has been helpful to supplement some of that. And I would say that, I mean, I don't know anyone else that's serving, well, actually, no, I do. Burlington is serving their BIPOC business community probably better than we are. But they have, of course, a lot more capacity than we do. That Working Communities Challenge grant is set to sunset in June of 2026. And so I don't know if you've had time to read my email that was a response to a question that Christine asked, like if there was a community economic development officer, what they might do.
Yeah.
And my feeling is we could supplement some of that capacity that Downtown Winuski has with some, with more targeted support for that. We did some fundraising, or we tried to do some fundraising this year with the Vermont Professionals with Color Network, which of course is a special organization for BIPOC businesses. And they're growing their expertise in serving New Americans as well. And that, the funding didn't go anywhere. The grant that we wrote wasn't successful. So there's just, there's, we have a need for that here. We can't cover all that need now. I would not expect one and a half people to be able to serve the whole community.
Thank you.
And maybe you've already reported out on this to council, but I feel like we've made significant progress this past fall and early winter in working with Ruth, Elaine, myself, and the Communications Director at the city. We've really come together, I believe, as a community in looking at serving exactly who you're talking about. We now have, we now have a database. We understand who everyone is. We didn't even know how many businesses we had until September of last year. And we, I feel like we've come a really far way, but we still have a lot more work to do. But I feel like we definitely set the groundwork in using the, essentially trying to figure out how to support Main Street businesses during construction. That was the precipice of why we came together, but there's been a lot of ripple effects that have come out of that that I really feel like has been really solid groundwork that we didn't have a year from now. Would you agree?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, thank you. That, I do appreciate that context. That is definitely a power team. Yeah. So appreciation for that to both of you and Paul and Ruth.
If I could ask a more broad question. In the Funding and Sustainability Request Document, you talk about maintaining and expanding events. That if no funding is secured, the organization will fully dissolve. And the last time Melissa was in here, you mentioned doing some analysis on the events and programming, I assume for like return on investment prioritization. I would love to hear what conversation you've had about if you can't secure this full $50,000, but you could get additional. Like, is there some scaling back possibility? What would you prioritize, what would that look like, essentially?
Want to take it, or?
Well, I mean, George?
Well, I mean, what level of scaling back are you talking about? Like putting on less events? Which ones do you choose to do away with? What is the community going to be, not care if you do? Right now, we're looking at if we could have sustainability for the operating costs, the more things that we could do, the growth we could have, the things that we can't do right now because we're spending time trying to find ways to pay the operating costs. Instead, we could be getting out into the community and doing things that serve other people rather than just ourselves. And then to even take a step back from that and then cut back on the things that we've grown into just seems defeatist, you know, seems like just moving back, cutting back on things for how long and why. We can't continue to spend our time trying to just come up with the operating costs to pay people salaries week to week and not be out there trying to be vibrant and do more for the city. It just seems like it would dwindle down to an end. I know that other than Melissa and Sarah, the rest of us are all volunteered, we're not paid. We put a lot of time and effort in this because we love Winuski and have for a long time. And we want to see more growth and more vibrancy happen even during the construction, let alone how great it could be when it's over. So we tried not to have a lot of discussions about everything coming to an end. It would be sad. It's not the direction we want to go.
I'd, if I could, I'd amend that slightly to say that now is a bad time to pull back because of construction. If we don't have, like, even just what we've been doing so far for in terms of events in that sense of like, oh yeah, please keep coming here and it's great still, this is, it's a... It's not like a normal year when there's no construction going on. I feel like the conversation is different because of the timing.
We put a tremendous amount of time in talking about how we're going to support businesses during construction. This is a, it's a, it's a critical time for us to exist as an organization in order to support the businesses during this six-year construction period that we're only one year into. I mean, the amount of time that Elaine and I and Paul and others put into discussions with the marketing firm that we're working with, how we're going to roll these things out, what the schedule looks like, it's a tremendous amount of effort. And we're doing it because we don't want to see that 30% to 60% reduction in revenue that they saw last year. So it's an investment in our community that we need to make right now. Pulling back, I don't, I don't, I don't really, from a business model perspective, I don't really understand how it would make, how it would make sense for what we need to do right now to support our businesses.
And to add to that, we had, you know, we had a major sponsor pull out for our Juneteenth celebration that we put on. And it would require Melissa, instead of fundraising, to pay our operating costs, to now focus on finding a sponsor that could replace that, because that's not something that our organization wants to give up. We want to be able to put on a Juneteenth celebration, as we've done the last few years. So shifting her focus now and finding a sponsor for that event, and now we can't make payroll. So it's, it's kind of, you know, it's a little, like a juggling act that's not really working for us.
I just want to recognize, like, I hear everything you're saying. I'm concerned about construction impacts. I'm concerned about a general degradation of economic activity because people don't want to spend money. I don't know where we get $50,000 right now. Like, we didn't budget for this, right? So I don't know what that looks like. I want to have like a robust discussion. I personally do not want to make the decision tonight because I think we need time to think about that. But it is a, it's a tough ask that we need to think about.
And I might be a mishearing, so I have, I guess, a similar question where it seems like it's presented as all or nothing, is the way it sounds. That may not be the intention. It sounds like with funding, we'll be able to do more. Without funding, we won't exist. So it's hard to scale that with. With funding, we'll... With funding, we'll, like, how does not having the additional funding mean, like, all or nothing, I guess? Why doesn't it mean more of just status quo? Or, I, I don't know. It's presented as like if we have funding, we can do more, but...
Well, we have momentum right now. And we, we put some effort into doing that, but we just, we can't keep moving forward if we don't have the funds to do it. So that's, that's how we can have more. Is that, yes, we can keep status quo, but then we can keep building on it because we do have momentum. And I think that the relationship that's being built between Melissa and Elaine and the city and the work that they're doing together for the construction and the marketing plan on that, there's forward momentum on that. I mean, there's, there is more that we can provide if we sustain, if we get stabilized. And the idea of it's all or nothing at all is that we're not, it's not a, it's not a balanced budget. Like it's not being, this is not a sustainable thing.
And the status quo isn't working and hasn't. And that's why we got in trouble with the IRS. Previous people attempted to just hide problems and the money wasn't there. I mean, it was the wrong choice of who not to pay. I can assure you on that. But yeah, it, it's not working. It hasn't been working. And that's, that's what we're saying. Is there somewhere in between? Sure, but you're going to give up something in that process. And will it be too much to give up? That's, I'm not sure where that line gets drawn. And we're not trying to say it's all or nothing. We're, we're trying to say that if we had enough to meet the operating costs, we could concentrate on everything else.
Well, and I think, and I'm not sitting there, but because I do attend some of your meetings and we chat, if you are not able to pay the executive director, Melissa in this case, if you don't have a paid staff member because you're not, you're not able to bring in that money, the city's not able to fund that money, there's not a staff person to do any of that work. So I think that's why we're seeing the all or nothing because a volunteer board cannot do the level of work that a paid full-time staff member plus a part-time staff member can do. So I think it becomes nothing, as in any organization. If the staff member's not paid, the staff member will leave.
And Bryn, one of the, one of the words that's been coming up as we've been preparing all of this information is ultimatum. And we all hate that word. Like that's not the way we want this to feel. It's more that we're just, we're, we've uncovered all of the, we've uncovered everything and now we're showing you what it is. Like we're not hiding behind Excel spreadsheets that paint a picture that's not real and unpaid payroll taxes. Like this is what's real. Like it's not an ultimatum. It's just, this is what it is. And so we either do it and we do it really well, or we scale back and it becomes, you know, just keeping up the downtown designation and the paperwork that is associated with that and everything else goes away. It's, none of us want it to be perceived as an ultimatum. We just want it to be known that this is just the information now.
Yeah. And I want to again say that I really appreciate the level of detail that is exceptionally helpful for me in making an informed decision. I think the hard part is we've, the community's already passed a budget for FY26. And as I mentioned, we don't know where we can pull from. And there are many other things that are demanding similar high priorities. And so I think the effort is to say like, if we can't meet the request as asked, is there, are there any alternatives or is it really just, it's not sustainable?
We would, we would lose Melissa. We would lose our, we would lose Sarah. So, that, that's, that's it. And, and for me personally, the reason why I'm on this board is to do the really meaningful and exciting work that we do. And I, you know, I would certainly probably step down from that and there would be transition. But, I mean, it's not, I, we've tried to work it any which way to see if we can make it stick, but it's not.
Yeah.
So, yeah, unfortunately. I mean, just the, just the reporting alone. You know, the, we'd, there would have to find someone who could do that, I guess.
I think you could, I think the answer would be the city could hire a temporary farmer's market manager and that's what you would have. And the bulk of the reporting to keep the downtown designation would fall on city staff. I don't think there's anything in between that.
As a follow-up question, and I might not have gotten to this in the, the materials provided. Is there, do you have a specific deadline in mind by which you would need this?
Yeah, I mean, the, the bank account is pretty much gone.
I'm running my last payroll this week.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, the way that the funding works with the timing, which there's like a massive gap. And if someone, if our, one, one sponsor doesn't come in right at the right time.
Which is what happened.
Which is what we've been doing for pretty much the last, as long as I've been on the board. You know, it's been basically like, I know the previous ED would skip paying themselves.
Yeah. So we lost, we lost two major sponsors early this year. And so that's what, that's what has put us in this emergency sort of cash flow basis because we literally were making it work one week to one week to one week and checking to make sure that there was checks in the mailbox. And so, it just kind of became very obvious to us when we lost one big sponsor and now another one's sort of in the lurch. It just became really obvious that this is where we, this is where we are. As Elaine and I have been saying, the business model's just broken. It just has been for a long time.
Sure, yeah. Thanks for that context.
Sorry if I interrupted you.
No, not at all. I mean, Melissa's been kind of telling us this from, for a while. And I think, you know, every, every meeting we have is like focused on how are we going to make pay? So then it kind of has become aware, you know, we, we sort of got the message.
Is there any more context you can share with us about why business membership has never been pursued as a revenue stream, a stable revenue stream?
So when we originally, well, the last time we talked about it was spring of 2020. And that's when we were originally starting to talk about it and obvious, for obvious reasons, stopped talking about it. And then we revisited it, we constantly are revisiting it. And because we want to make sure that the services that we provide are accessible to everyone in our city and all businesses in our city, we would, if we did a membership, it would be at such a low cap that it doesn't look like it could be a sustaining piece to us. And membership for us feels very exclusive and that's not really what this organization is about. So, instead of doing membership, we do a sponsorship program so that the businesses that can put in money can and do. I know pretty much everyone who's on the board that is part of a business has put in sustaining dollars to events and to other things. And that's available to everyone at any rate, so they can come in at any, you know, pay rate that they want. So that's kind of our look at, at the membership. And we have looked at community memberships as well. And we do that with, you know, Adopt a Pumpkin and we've done it with the Community Match with Better Places. And we're doing it in other ways that makes it so that someone can throw in a dollar or they can throw in, you know, a thousand dollars. And they're still able to access everything that we have that we're doing, so.
So our business memberships, just for context, range from one business gives $100 a year. There's another business that gives $10,000 a year and everything in between. And we have created a really robust, what we're calling sponsorship packages as opposed to membership packages so that people can get marketing benefits from contributing to the organization as opposed to just a membership due that they just need to write a check for that we cash. We're, we're trying to make it more beneficial on both sides.
What, what I'm thinking about is that this, the work you do benefits our residents and our businesses. Our residents are forced to contribute to this and our businesses have the option. And that's not entirely true because they're also likely paying property taxes. I, I would be curious what the percent of revenue you receive is from business sponsorships versus other sources. I didn't see that clearly in here.
And I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Yeah, I didn't figure it out.
I am happy to follow, follow up with the answer to that.
We are, so I think you included in here the city's contribution right now being $36,000. Is that the sidewalk permits and the 5% of local options tax, which fluctuates?
Right.
And so now you're seeking $50,000 additional, actually, I would assume you're seeking $86,000 firm, not based on fluctuating local options tax revenue collection? This increase would be about, I may have done it wrong, 18% of our projected local options tax for this year if we put $86,000 towards downtown Winuski?
I didn't do the math.
I think you said there was like 484 projected for this year?
I mean, if you, yeah, if you divided 15 of that, then that should be it.
Yeah. It's, it is a significant portion of the tax revenue that we're collecting that when voters approve said, yes, we will approve local options tax because we, the money will be used to offset capital and infrastructure. So we did the 5% a couple of years ago to add more funding to downtown Winuski, seeing the connection between the work you do and generating more tax revenue. I just want us, this is not a decision of any sort, but I just, I have that in my mind. Like that's a big chunk of that revenue that we would be redirecting to not what we said it was for, to taxpayers. It's not necessarily explicit, right? Because we, we could take $50,000 from general fund. It's just property taxpayers. But it's a big ask and I'm having a hard time thinking about where we pull 50 grand from and what we give up because of that, either in reduced capital funding or something else in operations. And Elaine, I don't know if you've actually done work yet to see where we could get another $50,000 from.
Yeah, so for FY26, because it's not in the budget, it would be coming out of reserves. So, I, I have to relook at what's currently on the potential reserve ask list to compare this to those. So I haven't done that work yet. And after FY26, that's a bigger conversation because I would balance against everything else that's in that budget ask.
Mm-hmm.
Which is what you're saying. To me, it's, the reason why I push so hard to have this in front of council is because it isn't, it isn't just, it's not just an expense, obviously. It's an investment. And so my fear is like what we're going to lose is more than that. And I can't, I'm probably never going to be able to prove that.
Yeah. Well, also for, forward-looking, I, we've been having this discussion about bringing back a CDO role. That's another $100,000 plus. And all the other things that we already backed, Bernard.
Right.
Like this just feels like a very big decision in the bigger picture of things that we have to debate. I am curious what your like immediate need is if we weren't able to commit to this. You're, you're already not able to make payroll, right? Like, is there some short-term temporary funding? If it took us more than a week to get to a decision here?
I haven't, I haven't run those numbers or thought about it from that perspective. I, I guess I've just been looking at it from what we need for the future and what sustainability is and not, I don't want to use the word Band-Aid, but like short-term fix. It's like, I've been more thinking about it as presenting the picture to you all of like this, this is what it is. Either you want it or you don't. And I feel like we've been doing the month-to-month like short-term fix for years and years now. So, I haven't run those numbers because I haven't been thinking about it from that perspective.
That's fair.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of, you know, it's always about timing, right? And I, I think it's a matter of like, we would need to pull from reserves or make some other budgetary redirection, as the mayor stated already, just because we don't have time to include it in the FY26 budget. And I don't, I think it would just be an adjustment to what's been approved, right?
Uh, well, it'd be reserve funds.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think, for me, I think it's a matter of like how we would go about it, for me. And what the list of sacrifices would be for, for us to be able to do that. So, I think it comes back to the same, like the same question you had is, what would be the most immediate need? And how does offering that help ensure some degree of continuance until we can, you know, look at the FY27 budget, which is a long time from now. It's still March. Which is crazy. It's been the longest month ever.
I guess I have a simplistic draft answer to Christine's question, which is payroll. Like what?
Yeah.
Keep, if you're willing to do that until you make a decision, then at least, at least they can pay their people until they have a decision. Because may, you know, what if we come up with it? You don't want to lose them in the meantime.
Right.
I mean, it sounds awful, but this is not, this was not their intent going this conversation. This just happens to be where we are now, unfortunately.
And I think the degree of transparency is difficult, but I really appreciate it. And I think for me, it, it just shows like the level of need. So, I, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
And the emergency piece of it feels really weird to me because normally this time of year, we would have had these two sponsors that would have gotten us through this timeframe to get us to the vendor fees coming in for the farmer's market, to get us to the sponsorship dollars for the next. Like, it's just because we had two people drop that all of a sudden, we don't know how to pay ourselves anymore. And I think to Laura's point, it was like that was an eye-opener to how weak we really are to have just two people drop out because of the state of the world right now. Just made us fall apart, so. I don't want to say that I apologize, but I do feel a little weird that I'm sitting in front of you saying, I only have one more payroll left that I'm going to run tomorrow. And then the bank account's empty. Because that's, it's not the way it's ever been. I, I always had those two checks coming in in March. So, anyway, I'm not apologizing for it. I'm just trying to be transparent that it feels a little weird to be sitting here saying we can't make the bills in two weeks.
And I definitely want to acknowledge too, like the emotional just sustainability of having to run a business or a nonprofit in that way is.
Thank you.
Yeah, really, really hard. How about regional dispatch funds?
The ACCD funding, that is stable? That's a guaranteed every year?
If you keep me, it is.
Yeah.
But if you don't, no. It's required to have an executive director and a work plan associated with it. That's $25,000 for the record.
And I know you haven't been able to pursue anything without the nonprofit status. Is there any other stable, like grant funding on your radar? And there may not be. I know they're not usually good for ops.
No, it's, it's a wonderful question. And Elaine asked me this question.
Two seconds after you heard.
Two seconds after I opened the mail, like then I saw it. I don't know yet because I, I had no idea what the timeframe was. The IRS gave us absolutely no information. And so, what I've been researching for grant funding has been what a municipality can provide as a fiscal aid. And so what I've been researching for grant funding has been what a municipality can provide as a fiscal agent for another entity. And we've been putting it through that lens and most of them, as we've seen, thirty-two of them that we researched, like, one came out. So I haven't, I haven't been in a place of being able to understand now that we are an established nonprofit, what there is out there, except for, I can say, the Main Street America accreditation that is about to be approved tomorrow gives us access to a lot of different grant funding, mostly through T-Mobile, um, that other entities wouldn't be able to have and that we haven't been able to even think about because we didn't have the nonprofit status.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know the answer to it yet because it's so brand new.
I wonder if there's a scenario where we consider one-time funding through this year. You have a chance to investigate other opportunities and then we reconsider this in the FY twenty-seven budget for what the need is for ongoing. Um, does your budget line up with ours, like, timing wise? Do you know, Elaine?
What's the fiscal year?
Our fiscal year is June thirtieth through July first.
Okay, so it's the same as ours?
But the way that I look at things and the way that you're gonna look at that budget and that Excel sheet, I look at it in a calendar year.
Oh, okay.
I mean, technically, yeah, the way we file our I-nineties, that's what our fiscal year is and how our reports run. But the way our board and our staff looks at things is January through December because we look at a calendar of events and who's sponsoring what and when it's coming in, so that's a little bit of a muddy answer to that.
Well, so then is the fifty thousand dollar need from January to December, like, that we're in, or is that for twelve additional months? Or like, would that be, if you got it today, would that be gone on December thirty-first and you would need it in the next year?
No, I, I would look at it, George, you correct me if, as our treasurer, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I would look at it as a January to December picture.
Okay.
That's, I think that's the way that I look at it, but please correct me if I'm wrong, you look at it in a different way from a fiscal year perspective.
I think it actually works out more towards a fiscal year because we would, if we're, if we're running the events and, and applying for grants, trying to get money, we're bringing the money in during the warm months. The money comes in through October with the farmer's market and the events and everything else that happens. So it's kind of weird, it's almost more like you're just looking spring to fall, you're not even looking at the winter months, you're just trying to carry through. So that's why it's, uh, strange to say what the fiscal year is, it's almost more of like a six or eight month program you're trying to get through.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, people are paid throughout the year, but that's really the, the focus. Haven't come up with any super fun cold weather events yet.
It's hard to get people out of the house.
Winuski already has an idea for that.
Well, I, maybe just for this year, the way to think about it is the fact that they're, they won't have payroll after this week, so. It's April to whatever fifty thousand.
Yeah, so I'm saying it'll probably almost line up because of the timing, almost line up June to June.
Right, okay, yeah, cause you'd expect some money to come in during the summer season. So this could tide us over until then and then care, altogether could carry you through into June thirty.
Do other folks have clarifying questions, more information they want before our next meeting?
You look so pensive, right?
Well, I'm thinking of proposing something that, um, given that you might have no means of paying yourselves after this, what amount of, what level of budget, budgetary gap would be necessary before we are able to make a broader decision?
I would need to, wanna go back and crunch actual numbers to give you something not in this moment, but tomorrow I could.
Okay, cause we're not, I mean, we're meeting next Monday, but I don't know if that's.
You have a two, bi-weekly payroll, right?
Yeah, bi-weekly payroll, so we're running, we're running it this week.
It's terrible that we're talking these frames, but.
I know.
Well, so I think for Monday, we could have a few things on the agenda. One could be a, a one-time funding request to meet the payroll. The second could be a one-time funding request for the total amount. Um, uh, in, including like, what does that mean for reserves? Maybe some future look at how this would impact potentially capital or FY twenty-seven, but I don't know if we can really take that into consideration yet, like the FY twenty-seven impact. Um, but for us to look more at the financial impact of the decision. And in a minimum, we could be positioned to approve filling the payroll need, like the very immediate need. If we felt we couldn't quite get there on the, the fifty K yet.
One of the things that Laura said that I thought was poignant, um, last week or the week before is it's really hard for me to accept sponsorship dollars for events that are happening this summer or fall. If I don't know that the organization is actually going to exist, like ethically, that doesn't, it doesn't feel right. It's hard for me to go out and try and solicit sponsorships for Pride when I don't know that we're gonna be around for that. So I hear the short-term fix and all of that and, and I appreciate it tremendously. Um, but it also, it also kind of paralyzes us a little bit for, from a programmatic standpoint. Um, like, efficiency Vermont's giving us thirty-five hundred dollars for Juneteenth. That could show up in my mailbox tomorrow and I could use that for payroll, but like, that's not why they gave it to me.
Could we maybe look at short-term funding through the summer season? If you could get us those numbers for operational costs?
Just as a, a I don't know, about a third option, but like, not to, something that at least gives us a little bit more room for comfort, like, obviously, there is the larger, um, need that needs to be addressed, but in, in the event of we don't have the time to be able to figure out how to meet that need, where, what are the gradations that we can try to help provide some support through, um, through the period where we have the information that we have and have the conversations with our finance director that we can provide a, a better decision.
So like through Halloween?
Yeah.
I would say through the events, you can feel okay about taking the money for the events.
That's through December. Because of the pop-up, yeah.
What'd you say?
That's through December.
So you would know that the events will be going on as we're accepting sponsorships for them, right?
Yeah.
So I can, I can kinda hear what you're saying, like, if you cover next month's payroll, that would be great, but then what can you actually do out of that, right? We'll give you payroll, but you're not gonna do any events?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we can try to come up with the money and accept sponsorships to do the events, but again, it's gonna be no, event by event, so if we take in money for Juneteenth, what are we doing as far as, are we accepting donations towards Pride? Are we gonna do Pride? Are we gonna do Halloween? It's just, if we're going to be accepting sponsorship for those events, we kinda need to know we're gonna be able to pay the staff to actually do them.
My only thought about the payrolls, if you wanted to decide that today, but Melissa isn't comfortable giving a number today, so.
She doesn't have a number and it's not worn like that. I mean, I guess it's just approving a smaller event request amount.
Yeah. Uh, so I guess my point is, i- if, do you want something less than the option of one time through December? Cause right now you really only have two real ones, the full amount or through December. Do you want something that's less than that and based on what?
It doesn't sound like it, based on what the event schedule is.
Is there something that you would suggest that's lost to December? It's fine if you say no, just trying to come up with options to this point.
I mean, without having like secured any grants or anything, without having been a nonprofit until last week, it's, it's just too hard to know, right? It's, it's definitely rolling some dice with taking people's money for events that may not happen.
A follow-up question, um, does it have to be one time or, um, as in like, we pay that amount like upfront, basically? Um, or is it possible to provide a commitment over like the next six months, so it's not as significant of a hit to our reserves or there's a little bit more flexibility on our end to massage where the funds would be coming from and what other hard decisions would have to be made?
I don't think we need it all at once.
Okay.
Just.
All right, I wasn't, I wasn't quite understanding that.
I think we pay quarterly probably because of the LOT.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, again, I wasn't sure if that was like, we, we need fifty K right now.
No, no, not at all.
Okay. All right.
But you need something right now.
Yes, more than nothing right now, yes.
And I do wanna acknowledge the fact that Angela has scrubbed every single possible option for how to get us to make payroll next, next week and I really, really, really appreciate that. Um, and she has, it's only half of what we need, but I do wanna acknowledge the fact that the city staff is really trying to help us.
Yeah.
Within the bounds of our.
Within the bounds of our MOU.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there room for public comment on this though?
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Do you wanna come up to, maybe Charlie, you wanna move your microphone outward?
Oh. Um, just as a citizen of Winuski, it is expensive to live here and I love it. And I love it because of the events that you guys put on and I cannot imagine the tears, the sweat, the crying in the bathroom that must happen to do all of these events. Because I can't even throw a fucking birthday party. So, you know, I, as a taxpayer, as a homeowner, I love Winuski with my whole heart and soul. But it wouldn't be the place that it is without the events that you guys put on. And I don't care what that does to our taxes. I will happily pay it and I know I would be hard pressed to find a single friend who lives here who wouldn't pay for it. And losing you guys would be losing the heart and the soul of the city, especially at a time like right now where the world is on fire and our democracy is crumbling by the day. Clinging to our community and feeling safe and held and like we have a fun place to be in our nice little bubble is enormously important for our psyche, for our city, um, for everybody. And I will, you know, happily volunteer to help you guys, but it's, you know, you can only ask people to do so much in addition to being a business owner, having your own job, whatever the case may be. You need to be paid for your time and your effort and your kind of blood, sweat and tears. And as a citizen, I am speaking up to say, I am happy to sponsor those extra taxes and everyone I know who lives and thrives in the roundabout because of all the fun events that you guys put on that make it worth living here, that make the construction emotionally manageable. And I think it's as simple as that, I don't think there's a debate to be had, I think you guys just deserve to be funded and supported in every way possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll open it up for virtual public comment too, if you're attending on Zoom, you can use the chat or raise hand feature. Okay. I think we have steps for information that we want for next Monday, um, to come back to this for the decision-making piece. Any, did I miss anything? Any final requests or comments, anything else from you guys?
I'll just make another comment. I think you meant, I think you said eighteen percent is what we would need to dip into, um, the.
For a point of comparison, yeah.
Right. Um, and Elaine, you, you also mentioned, you know, who, who's, you can't project what would actually happen, but after what you said, I wanted to speak up and say this, that we get that revenue because of businesses. And if a six-year construction season, we don't have an organization creating community and supporting businesses, I am sh- not sure we won't be worrying about more than giving them eighteen percent, because we might be worrying about mass closures of businesses that weren't able to survive during six years of absolute chaos and what that could do, uh, to the, to many aspects of living Winuski and bringing in taxes, so. I just hope folks will think about that as we move into next, next week on our final decision.
Okay. Well, that's the end of our agenda with just this one item. Um, so thank you all. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Bryn, second by Thomas, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries meeting adjourned, thanks everyone.
Thank you for coming in so much.
Thank you.